All right. Okay, we're just coming out of a non-public. And I apologize, it went a little bit longer than I had anticipated. I'm calling the ZBA meeting of June 9th to order at 7:07.
Yes. We are.
Going on the area.
Yes.
Do they take the question also?
Can you turn the PA down? Where do we do that, at Dana's desk? Okay. No problem, thank you.
Is it down?
We should have said, "That's not the PA."
Screwed up the frequency.
Was that what it was, Julie? Yeah, would you have a pleasure, a flag of allegiance?
My ladies and gentlemen, I am the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now, let's see. It appears that the agenda is, we're going to switch it around with the board's approval. It shows the minutes, review of, an approval of minutes for 324, 421, 428, and 55. However, we do need to have election of a chairman and a vice chair. So, let's do that first. And what I will do, oh, this is yours. This is the one you gave us when you were going to get it. I'll open up nominations for chairman. What was that, Quox?
I make a motion to have Dana Glennon chair of the ZBA.
Second. Second.
You second it?
I nominated Dana Glennon to be chair for ZBA, and Peyton seconded.
Any other nominations?
No.
Oh, okay. I see none. And we'll ask you to do the roll call, please, Mr. Vincent.
We'll start with Mr. Glennon.
You just have to do roll call. No, you start that way. You never start with the chair.
And...
Oh, I'm sorry, for the nominations, there's only one, yeah. Council, I mean, Dana Glennon as chairman of the ZBA, yes. I thought you were starting with me first to vote. I'm going to say, no, you start that way.
The request for the roll call, for the voting, yea or nay?
Yea.
They're supposed to say their name. Scott Quinn.
Scott Quinn, yea.
Scott Quinn, is he a yea?
Peyton Carr, yea.
Roseanne Quox, aye.
Richard Sheldon, aye.
Dana Glennon, aye.
All in favor.
Thank you, folks. And now, nominations, yes, motion pass.
I want to nominate Richard Sheldon for vice chair.
I can't even say it first. Nomination for vice chair. Okay, any other nominations? I see none. Roll call for vice chair, Richard Sheldon.
Mr. Quinn.
Aye.
Mr. Carr.
Aye, aye. Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Sheldon.
Aye. Motion passes.
Motion passes.
One more year. Okay.
One's a barbecue.
Tonight. We have a letter from Kay McTeigrisch? Is that how she called it?
McTeague.
McKee.
McTeague.
And it's a letter, I'm not sure if it's a letter of resignation or her term expired on 5/31/08. And yet, I'm looking at the website, and it shows that she doesn't, her term doesn't expire until...
2010, I think.
2010. So, before I accept this letter of resignation, Kay, if you're listening, I'm going to check and make sure that her term has expired officially, and then we can, we'll take it from there.
2010 is the correct expiration date for it, because I checked.
Okay, you did.
Yeah.
Okay, because she was told otherwise, and I'm not sure why. So, Kay, you may be coming back, I hope. So, all right, let's move forward here. A substance of minutes of March 24th of '08. Does everybody have a copy of those, by the way, of those minutes? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Okay, where?
The March 24th of '08.
I'll make the motion, but I was not there, so I'm not sure whether I...
You can't make a motion, then? Well, there's only, let's see, Roseanne Quox was there, Richard Sheldon was there, and I was there. So, one of you two have to make a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion, accept the minutes of March 24th.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I don't have any question.
Okay, I see none. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, minutes passed. All right, minutes for 421, '08.
31. 331.
I don't have that here on my agenda. I have 324, 421, 428, and 55.
Okay.
We had approved the March 21.
Yeah, we had, that's what I thought, too. We did approve that.
The draft on April 21 hasn't been approved.
Right, right.
So, we're to April 21?
Yeah, April 21, yeah.
That was on the... Now, I make a motion to approve the April 21 meeting.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Corrections?
I have April 28.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Are you an aye, Mrs. Quox?
I abstain.
You abstain? You were here.
But...
But you don't have the minutes, okay?
They're not in either one of my packets.
Okay. What about the minutes for 428? Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes for April 28, 2008.
Second.
Any discussion? You have a question?
No.
Oh, aye, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, passes. Motion for accepting of the minutes of May 5th, 2008.
I'd like to delay making a motion on May 20, on May 5th. As I'd like to make...
Okay, seeing as how...
Before we pass it, before we pass it, I'd like to make a motion.
Seeing as how we have not approved these minutes, this would be the appropriate time to go ahead and make a request to make a change in these minutes. And Mr. Sheldon, vice chair, would you, I believe you have the RSA that allows us to do that?
Yes, 674-33.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's 674-33, colon, 33, is the area.
Okay.
But as we haven't approved the minutes, we can make changes to the, to it.
Okay, and these minutes do not have...
These minutes pertain to our request for a rehearing.
Right, but what I'm getting at is they have no numbers on it, so you can't refer us to such and such a page, so we can pull it up and say where you're talking. So, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All you got to do is go to them.
No, I mean, page here, these pages. These are not numbered, so if you simply...
They're numbered up at the top.
Mine aren't. Are they, up on the left, left-hand corner? Is that where it is?
Yeah, up for left.
Thank you very much, I didn't see that. Okay, you have Richie.
I, as we got a rehearing before us, I don't even know if the applicant is interested, but I would like to, I would like to read what I want to change that we approved, which I think we approved in error, because I don't believe they had enough time to do what they wanted to do, as far as I'm concerned. And I would like to give a copy to the applicant, so they can read, read what I've got, and they can look at it as I, as I read it. And see if they're agreeable with it. If they're not agreeable with it, I'd say we will approve the minutes and open up for a rehearing.
Okay, before we go any further, let me make a clarification here as, before we approve those minutes or make any changes to those minutes.
Yeah.
The board will consider, the reason why we're here this evening is, the applicant, 382 Middle Street LLC, various reference, section 3.01, road footage of the Newmarket zoning. The applicant requests that various to permit the future subdivision of one lot into two lots, one having an area of 2.065 acres and a frontage of 200 feet, and the other having an area of 5.432 acres and footage of 25.96 feet, where 200-foot minimum footage is required. The lot is located at 71 Packers Falls Road, tax map U1 Lot 22, Zone R1. Now, with that being said... The applicant, let me show, does anybody have a copy of the request of the applicant dated May 19?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let me just take a look, read at this first. Okay, we don't need that, okay. On May 19th, the chair received this letter. We are asking for, this is coming from the 282 Middle Street LLC, 282 Middle Street Portsmouth, New Hampshire, 03801, given dated May 19th of 2008. Dana Glennon, Chairman, regarding 71 Packers Falls Road, tax map U1 Lot 22, Zone R1. Dear Mr. Glennon, we are asking for a rehearing of the decision of the 282 Middle Street LLC on property located at 71 Packers Falls Road, tax map U1 Lot 22, Zone R1. We specifically are requesting a rehearing on the following conditions. One, planning board approval be obtained within six months. Two, substantial completion be done within six months of the planning board approval. The ordinance can provide that a permit authorized by various will expire if it is not used within a certain number of months. Except from Peter Langland, New Hampshire, Practice Land Use Planning and Zoning Section, Second Edition. In the Newmarket zoning ordinance, no wording can be found as to when a various will expire if it is not used within a certain number of months. Additionally, town officials feel can, now, I'm not sure what that's supposed to really say. Additionally, town officials feel cannot be met in appropriate timeframe. That's a little out of sequence here. In speaking with the town planner, we understand that in some cases, it is taking much longer than six months to receive wetland permits alone. In this case, we need wetland permits and permit from DOT prior to submitting a subdivision plan to the town. The following conditions, which state substantial completion be done within six months of the planning board approval, seems vague to us, and we would like to have clarification on this. Thank you for your consideration of this matter. Sincerely, Susan Rice, duly authorized agent for 282 Middle Street LLC. Now, with that being read, the vice chair would like to, at this point, because these minutes have not been approved, of the May 5th, he would like to make a correction and...
Amend the minutes?
Amend the minutes.
I would like to amend the minutes, and first, I'd like to, I'd like to withdraw my motion of May 5th on the conditions.
What page do you want on that?
Page 10.
Thank you.
I believe. Am I correct?
Do you have the minutes?
It's not a bold, so I'll wait for you.
It's on page 10.
Thank you.
Page 10, the last page in the back. Which would be down here. Oh, no, this one, all those in favor. Go ahead, you're ready.
I need a second to have it withdrawn.
I'm second.
I'm sorry.
Second, I'm sorry.
And we all have to give approval to having this done, so there was, there was a motion made, it was second. Everybody concurs to allow him to make this change? Aye.
He has to make the change before we can approve it.
Well, we have to allow him to do it, and then we have to vote on that change afterwards.
Aye.
Okay, you all set? Okay, aye.
We all set. The applicant has come before the board requesting a rehearing regarding the conditions we placed as part of the approval, specifically on bullet number three and four. Chairman Glennon noted on page 10 of the draft, which we still haven't approved, that the board, that the zoning board could not dictate substantial development. The board agreed to strike that condition from the approval. In speaking with the town planner and the zoning administrator, it may or most likely take longer to receive the wetland permits than the six months we allowed as part of the conditions of approval. Due to this unforeseen timeframe involved in the permitting process, i.e. wetland permits, and not having approved the minutes of the meeting on May 5th, 2008, I would like to withdraw my motion to grant the applicant's request for variance, reference section 301, with conditions as just stated, and replace the bullet number three. Planning board approval be obtained within six months to that. The applicant shall have before the planning board an application for subdivision approval within 12 months, and may receive one extension of six months with demonstration of good cause and approved by the zoning administrator, dated June 9th, 2008. Now, I don't even know if that's agreeable with the applicant, you would have to ask them.
Yep, I will ask that question.
I don't know, I had, I had no discussion with them over there, so.
And Sue, I'm sorry?
Just for clarification, can we just then strike bullet four? I mean, that's essentially what you just...
Yeah, bullet four should be strict, right?
Bullet four will be stricken, correct.
It shouldn't have been in the draft, anyway.
Right, but because it is in the draft, that's allowing us to do that.
Yeah.
Right. At this point, Ms. Rice, I'm going to allow you to speak. I'm not opening up to the public, there's no public here, but if you want to come to the podium and give us your thoughts on that, if that's agreeable to you?
Good evening, for the record, my name is Susan Rice, and I represent 282 Middle Street LLC. At this point in time, it looks as though if we went forward with Mr. Sheldon's proposal, we would have 12 months, I'm assuming, from today, and then an extension of six months, so we would have a total of 18 months to get it before the planning board, which I honestly feel is, is more than reasonable. And my only other request is that I be reissued an amended notice of decision for the record, and that that number four bullet definitely be removed.
Before you answer to that, our administrator here of the zoning has a question.
Just in reference to your comments, the 12 months is what was suggested, the six months was an extension, if you could demonstrate cause for that six months. So, the six months is not a given.
I would assume that if I presented you with applications and correspondence, say, I did not get the wetlands permit within the 12 months, you would accept the fact that we have filed with DES and have made progress with them as consideration if we needed that additional six months. I don't think, I shouldn't say I don't think, because I can't predict the future, just like all of you can't predict the future. But I think in reasonable practical terms, we should be able to accomplish what we need to in 12 months. But I'm just looking for clarification as to what you would be looking for if we weren't able to meet that in 12 months. I just don't want to be here 12 months from now and getting into it that I need another six months. I just want to know.
If your application to the DES was dated June 1st, you certainly would not get the additional six months.
Okay.
Certainly, if it was dated, excuse me, I should state that year as well.
Yeah, 2009, so say, we already would buy that, but, okay. So, are you saying that if it came in on June 1st of '09, that you would not more likely grant that...
Six months extension.
Six months extension, which kind of makes sense, yeah, it does. But if you had everything in place, and just a question of, there's a delay somewhere in the process, you have that option to come back, as what Mr. Sheldon put in there, for an additional six months. But it has criterias to which it hasn't been met, too. All right, and council, oh, council, Mrs. Quox?
And even planning board will approve an application, and one of the conditions can be per approval of the DES, and that usually has, because sometimes it is quite lengthy to get those, in order, if they want to proceed in a timely fashion, they could do that. But like Dan said, if it's, you know, if they show due diligence, that they've been applying, and just this comes up and that comes up.
Correct. Is that satisfactory to you?
Mm-hmm.
And does that process start today, right?
Upon approval.
Upon approval, it starts, the clock starts ticking today, if this is approved.
Yeah, well, we've got June 9th, we put it at that would be.
I just want her to know that it's not going to be, you know, she's on...
I just don't want it retroactive to May 5th, and I've lost a month and four days or whatever.
I had put today's date on it.
He put today's date on it, and you all got a copy of that anyways.
Yeah, and as well as an amended notice of decision would be greatly appreciated.
Yep, and how is that project going so far?
Um, we're working on it.
Okay, so, it's agreeable to you, we'll get the proper paperwork. Upon approval of this board, we'll get that information out to you, and you'll have all the necessary papers to verify the board's decision on that. And at this point, on the changes that the vice chair has made, do we all concur with that?
I'll second his proposal.
Any further discussion on this? Do you see anything that we need to be capital of?
I do not.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mrs. Quox?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear you this way. Okay, so you'll be duly notified of all the changes, and your clock starts today, and Mr. Carr has a question, I think.
No, not a question, would a motion to approve the minutes...
That was the next thing I was going to do, yep.
Be appropriate?
Right, it would be.
And what is it she wanted, with an amended note of decision?
I asked, I do have a notice of decision dated May 5th, and I would like to just have an amended notice of decision, so that the record is, is complete.
And...
I'll put it on the bottom here.
Okay.
It's there on the bottom, the date.
The date is the...
As of today.
As of today, but we also have to have the, the amendment that, from three, okay.
Yeah, number four will be strike.
Because the planning board does that themselves.
And I'm going to ask the administrator, Mr. Vincent, to please make sure that Sue gets a copy of the minutes once they're drafted. They'll be in the draft form, Sue, and then when they're approved, you all got a copy.
I just have one other question. Because we're amending this, does that also open up the appeal process, if, again, for another 30 days? Or did the appeal process expire?
Upon this passing, I would say the appeal is done at this point, am I correct?
Well, I think the authority that the board revisited this case was under the conditions of a waiver, and that they've given, under consideration of Mr. Sheldon's suggestion, further consideration to the applicant, but the original decision was made May 5th, which this isn't a new decision, it's an amendment to a decision.
Amendment, correct.
So, however the board would want to vote on that or not, maybe it's for a board vote or not.
Okay, how are we, what are we voting on, to say the appeal process is ended?
Either starts now or started on May 5th, which, May 5th would have, would have expired.
It would have expired.
And now, the applicant is asking to be reinstated that opportunity to appeal this decision.
No, I'm just asking, does that reinstate that for anybody who wants to appeal this amended decision? I mean, I'm just...
You mean, like the public?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Carr?
I would say, in an effort to try and be as fair as possible, that we should start, restart the clock to...
The appeal?
Today's date.
Today's date.
Give them another 30 days, I mean, what's, what is there to lose?
I don't see anything to lose, either. That make sense?
The board's decision.
Yeah, I think, I think we should have a 30-day appeal process from this date, because we made a major change.
Exactly.
And I, and I don't think that will, will affect them at all.
Hopefully not.
It's just to be protocol.
Absolutely.
If it does anything, it'll allow the property owners to come in, but... Mrs. Quox, we have...
Have all property owners been properly notified in regards to this application?
Of the appeal?
Of the appeal and the original application.
The original application was properly notified. What is happening here this evening is only an amendment to the reading of the minutes, which I don't believe require notification to the public.
Well, she... For rehearing.
Tonight's meeting was, you submit a letter, it's my understanding, you submit a letter to ask the board to consider holding a rehearing.
Okay, you don't have to notify the public on that.
That's not what this, that's not what this is about.
No, you don't have to do it, right.
Okay, because I know on the, the planning board end of it, there was problem with notification.
That's not this case.
No, not on their project, there was prior notification on the, on the other project.
Oh, is the, okay.
Can I clarify this?
Yes. All right, we're going to have clarification here, please.
The applicant is not here this evening on her request. The applicant is, the action that this board has taken is not on the applicant's request here. The action is taken by the vice chair in reading and understanding, more so, what the board agreed to in its last meeting, has given an opportunity to the applicant, unrequested by the applicant, or not requested by the applicant. So, I guess the applicant could deny Mr. Sheldon's proposal and move forward with...
The rehearing.
Right.
Correct.
Well, I can move forward with my request to ask the board to grant me a rehearing.
Correct, and we have to make that decision. That's what we're here for originally tonight, was to consider whether we would allow a rehearing on this appeal. That's what we're here for tonight. But because we had the minutes we had to approve tonight, that all kind of worked out together. Mr. Sheldon picked up on this and said, "Well, the minutes were a draft form, we never really approved them, and in that draft form, we see section number four, which shouldn't have been there." So, by doing this, we're allowing you the opportunity to see if you agree with this.
And it's duly noted and greatly appreciated that you would take this time.
Yeah, and you said yes, so that would eliminate us to have to go, we still have to decide whether we want to grant a hearing, because we don't have to, because we've already resolved the issue here, so...
As long as the applicant's comfortable.
And the applicant has indicated she is comfortable.
Yeah.
And so, what's on the table now is a motion to whether we want to start the clock ticking now on the appeal process as of the date of today, of June 9th.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so your clock starts ticking right now, you already lost 10 seconds of it.
Whoa.
So, at this point, that's all, we've done all of that. I can't think of anything else we have to do with that, but the original reason why we were here was to see if we would grant the applicant...
How about the minutes?
I just have a question, and I might have missed it, but did you call for a vote for this whole thing?
Yes, we did it already.
You did, okay.
Yep.
And it was unanimous.
Yep.
But we do need to approve the minutes of May 5.
Right, and that's the next thing we're doing now.
As amended.
As amended, correct. And do you have a motion on that?
Yes, motion to approve the minutes of May 5, 2008, as amended on June 9, 2008.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, the original reason why we're here, and I don't know if we have to act on that or is this just a mute point? I think we should, just say, yeah, I think we should.
Or the applicant could simply say that she wishes to withdraw.
Yeah, and that would be the best way of doing it. Applicant, we're allowing you to come back up.
I think if she suggested that she would withdraw her application for a rehearing on the May 5 meeting.
Right, and she has until...
But then you still have the June 9 meeting to go back to.
To fall back to.
All right, all right.
That's a good point, thank you.
I'm formulating this so that it comes out of my mouth correctly.
That's okay, thank you.
I, Susan J. Rice, who represents 282 Middle Street LLC, had put in a letter for a rehearing dated May 19, 2008. And as of June 9, 2008, I would like to redraw that request. That request is specific to the notice of decision that was issued on May 5, 2008 for the 282 Middle Street LLC variance that was granted by this board.
Thank you.
So moved.
No, that's not us.
No, we don't have to vote on that.
I'm withdrawing.
Just withdrawing, okay.
All right, she's pulling it back, so...
That's for the record.
One minute's gone by. Thank you, Sue, for doing that, that was very...
Do we have to take a vote to accept her withdrawal?
Yeah, I think we should, yes. I think we should, just to show it on record that we did do that.
Second, what Susan said.
Okay, all right. And all those in favor, accepting the request to withdraw the applicant's request for a rehearing based on May 5 and the clock starting on June 9 for the appeal process of 2008?
So moved.
Aye, second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Very good, now, we have some other business. You're not going home that early. Yeah, I wish you would stop messing up this stuff here. Okay. I have a letter that I need to read. Okay, this letter is dated May 21, 2008. It is from Mitchell and Bates Professional Associates, attorney at law, 25 Beacon Street East, Laconia, New Hampshire, 038246, 03246. This address to the town planner, Diane Hotty. Dear Diane, I have decided that the time is right for me to retire from the practice of law. I will be winding up my responsibilities with Mitchell and Bates during the next few weeks and expect that my last working day with the firm will be Friday, June 27, 2008. An especially important task during the weeks leading up to my departure is to ensure that the legal interests of all my clients continue to be protected. I want you to know that the greatest enjoyment I have derived from nearly 20 years of practicing municipal law has come from working with so many fine municipal officials and employees. As I lead the scene, I take with me fond and lasting memories of those professional relationships. It is unfortunate that the efforts of those officials and employees on behalf of their communities are often not understood or sufficiently appreciated by the citizens who are so well-served. I am certain that Walter Mitchell will take whatever steps he deems appropriate to ensure that the firm continues to provide the level of service you have come to expect. In the days ahead, you will hear more specifically from us as to the handling of my current litigation for which I am now principal responsible. Also, I have asked Walter to change the name of the firm so that my name will no longer be included. I know you appreciate that this is a very exciting and somewhat frightening step for both me and my wife, Linda. If the fate allows, in the years ahead, we plan to enjoy cruising on our sailboat as well as more conventional travel, gardening, reading, visiting with family and friends, household projects, and a host of other activities that would engage a couple who are curious about the world. Thank you for your opportunity to be of service. You have my best wishes now and in the years to come. Signed, Timothy Bates. We will wish him luck. I will be in contact with Walter Mitchell to see who they plan on having to represent the ZBA board. So, it is regret, but we wish him well. I think that's all I had. Does anybody have any new business? I could have sworn there was something else I had, but I can't... Anybody? No new business? No old business? Okay, I will check on K's request to step down. And if I have no old business, no new business, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
One last comment. Perhaps you would put it out on air that we are seeking, just as the planning board is, that we also are seeking...
We are seeking alternates to our board and I think we have, we'll clarify this one, but I think we have two more.
Total of three.
I think it is total of three. So, the zoning board meets when there's, when there are issues that need to be, that are brought before us. It's not a board that meets on a monthly basis. Sometimes we'll meet twice a month, sometimes once a month. Sometimes we won't meet for a couple of months. So, if there are any volunteers out there, I please, please, sign up and go through Catholic Council, fill out the application, and it will be submitted to the board for review.
For the council.
To the council, you're correct, thank you. For review. Like all the other boards, we're burning out and we need some new fresh blood and volunteers, so volunteer to your community. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. I don't know if we're out there because you can't tell over there, can you?